It's March 5th, 2024, 7:30 PM. Going to call the meeting of the Town of Willington Plant and Exoning Commission to order. Members present, myself, Bob Shavid, Eka Sanoski, Joseph Paul, and seat Bill Benell for Andy Marco, and we'll see Michael Johansson for Doug Roberts. And tonight, no applications for his seat.
We actually did, you have one, the Sandy gravel renewal for Wayne Williams and Navratil came in, so that'll be a.
That'll be on the next agenda.
It's a one year, so it'll be in non-public hearings.
Okay. So other than that, sure, yeah, next hearing, you have no public hearings tonight. So item A, new business, one home occupation regulation discussion.
Okay, so we talked about this at the last meeting. I gave you guys a table that kind of showed all the regulations that we've talked about and kind of contemplated amendments to or that had come before you with as part of applications. And one of the items that we agreed to revisit was the home occupations. In the packet, I have, I pulled out the section that pertains to home occupation. So you have the definition and then section 11.01, which is the home occupation requirements as they stand today. And then I gave you a couple of examples from, from Talon and then also from Clinton, regulations that I'm familiar with. And we had talked about trying to establish a bit of clarity, but also essentially a tiered system that was a little bit more performance based in that the, the type of activity, whether it be external evidence or the type of the specific use has more to do with the way in which it gets approved. The other thing that we had talked about is that there's really not a clear ceiling in the regulations as they stand now to when something gets to be too big to be a home occupation. So if an operation is approved and it's operating under the home occupation permit, it's sort of hard to really determine if they've grown too big for their riches, if you will. So I put these kind of in front of you just to give you a sense of the tiered permits, which is similar to what we have in that we do have different approval requirements. It's not as if everything is done the same way. We have home occupation by strategic zoning compliance and special permit. But I think one of the things that we get a lot of feedback from in the office is that all of our home occupations are required annually to submit another permit. So a tax accountant or anybody that may be working out of their house, every single year they have to do a renewal. So it's basically a permit that says continuation of existing home occupation. They pay a fee, got to go through that review process. And I think for the smaller businesses, they feel like it's a bit unnecessary, which is why the Talon regulations, I think, are a useful point to consider because they have major and minor, but then they also have what they call a home office, which is essentially permitted without approvals. You don't need to go through commission application review, you don't renew on an annual basis. And it's very limited to someone that's essentially working from home. But it frees up those smaller businesses from not needing this continuous permit review. So the goal tonight is really just to kind of talk about it, get an idea from you guys. If you have any thoughts on how we want to structure it and then from there, take the regulations we have now, try to fit them in and then fill in the gaps or build out or adjust from there.
Is there a limit to the number of small home occupations someone can?
On their property?
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if either of these limit that, but I certainly could. I mean, yeah, you wouldn't be wanting to run multiple.
So with all the people that work remotely these days, that would really classify the home office, that would.
Not unless they were, you know, working for themselves and, you know, running the business out of the house.
You know, our language probably needs a little modernization. Now, we're talking about radio repair and TV, you know, let's throw away stuff these days. You know, maybe computer repair is becoming more modern. And not that it matters, but just sounds like it was written like 50 years ago.
And so like if you look at our current regs, 11.01, 02, 010, any special permit issued pursuant to this section shall be temporary and shall expire on such date as the commission may set in its approval of such permit, but in no event more than two years from the date of approval. It's, you can't provide for the expiration of a special permit. Special permits run with the land. You can require a compliance review. You can have them come back for certain things, but you can't say in two years, this permit is null and void. That's a pretty clear case law now. And if you do provide for any of those, they can't be less than what's afforded to them through the site plan process. So a site plan is good for at least five years. So you can't take them through an additional layer of review by going special permit, but then give them half the time. So something like that would need to be modified because we can't, we can't tell people that they may forcibly give up their approval after simply the passage of two years' time.
What are we charging people when they come in here for the annual renewal?
Annual application renewal. Oh, I believe. It's 90, 90 bucks.
What, what kind of revenues that provided the town?
Well, not much because we have to give 60 to the state. So, so we get, we get 30 bucks and we give 60 to the state.
Okay, and this is something that's not required if we don't want to do it annually or?
This is for the annual renewals. They would pay.
But this is up to the commission, whether it's annual or not, no matter what.
Right, so you could change the reg so that the more minor occupations didn't need the annual renewal. The hard part is even with the annual renewal, if they submit an application for a renewal and I do a review and I determine, I don't think it's in compliance, I can't then say, well, since you're not in compliance, you forfeit your permit. I would still have to take them through the enforcement process. The only person that can actually revoke a valid approval is a court. So even if you take them through every year, process is the same. If there's a violation, you send a notice and if they don't comply, you go to court. So the, this, this review that we're doing really doesn't afford us any opportunity other than just communicating. And it's a challenge to get people to actually submit on an annual basis. It's something that.
So how many percent of businesses don't submit, don't pay on an annual basis because they don't want to?
2022, we had 25% not renew.
Okay, what do you do about it?
Well, we tried to basically hunt them down and track them down. We had 2021, and I think part of that was probably COVID. We had almost 50/50 split, people that didn't renew. And part of that is they may not have been pursued previously for doing the renewals and, or the businesses don't operate anymore and they just don't tell us. So it's, it fluctuates, but yeah, we have some.
Of course, it's an issue.
Sounds like it, well, and then like, oh, I can be a small home occupation, I think the turnover is relatively high when it's come and go.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's just.
Is any of the tax base, like I have the home occupation, so my taxes are slightly differing. So if I let the home occupation go, I'm being taxed less somehow.
We, we don't have, we don't cross-reference between the assessor's office. So if you have any equipment or any taxable property associated with the business, you should be filing a personal property declaration with her and then they'll tax the equipment. And that's down to the computers, chair, if you're a hairdresser, all that stuff. We don't report our stuff to her. But one of the things that I wanted to look at, I mean, the other sort of interesting thing, and every time I look at this list, it always strikes me as being a little bit bigger than what I, what I envisioned. But through the, the EDC, we, we've got some property, a business list that I had the assessor run using her personal property accounts. So basically telling us, you know, who she has. And granted, there's people that have bricks and mortar locations included in this, but there's around 200 businesses that annually file personal property declarations. And so that, that's Dollar General, I mean, all those people. But we don't have 200 commercial properties. We don't even have 100, but we, we don't have anywhere near 100 home occupation permits that we renew on an annual basis, right? So the vast majority of people that I have businesses registered here fall somewhere in this gray zone. But there's a surprising number of businesses here, actually. At least I thought it was surprising.
Well, I've noticed in Talons, when they break down the, under permits required. So it goes from home office to minor home occupation to major home occupation. So when somebody hits the major home occupation, I mean, do they, do they need to have a minimum acreage?
Yes, four.
Okay.
Yeah, that's where the first line.
And they, that goes to the commission.
In any of these, I didn't, I may have glanced over earlier. You can have X number, maximum number of home offices, minor and major before each year. Not in compliance with anything.
Meaning the total or? Well, I think the intent is that you should have one, it should be one business. It's supposed to be subordinate to a single family home, which is the primary use. So I don't know how you could really say you have multiple businesses, I guess, unless somebody was a contractor and, and a spouse was working as a home office or a tax account or something. So we would have to, we could build that language in if it isn't in here.
I would think you'd start to exceed your ability to have a home occupation. Any combination, one major.
Well, I think we've gotten to a situation when the town here was, I know of one incident where, you know, it's a home occupation, yet they're burying commercial debris on their two acres. That shouldn't be happening.
Right.
You know?
Yeah.
And part of that's using up their secondary site for their leach system. If something goes awry.
And we have the other one where we did several rounds down here with complaints about it.
Yeah.
And those would be considered too major, I would think.
So the, the Talon reg at the bottom of what would be page two says you can have up to two minor home occupations, one major and one minor, but no more than one major. So they, they provide for that section, like 12.
Well, I think that would be something, however, our language gently hit that.
And I mean, the interesting thing is with that piece that you're referring to, the application that the commission saw, where there are others that are approved that are similar. Having several vehicles which require a CDL to drive with employees and equipment and, and coming and going, you know, it exists, but I'm not sure that that's something that really falls under home occupation. If you have, you know, several triaxles. And that, to me, is where not having a ceiling sort of creates a little, a little ambiguity in that these applications come before you and those are the ones, to me, that potentially create the biggest issue with those trucks that backup alarms, they idle, they, so.
So, I mean, you know, we know that there's situations like that. Does that mean that you approach them to changing the zoning of their property because of that?
Well, I think in, in the case of a property that, let's say, got an approval and meets, you know, the requirements of whatever it was when it was there.
To the grandfather again.
And, right, and the, and the bigger issue is that the historic interpretation of some of the regulations, I don't know was necessarily how I would read what the regulations say. So, well, if I can't see a sign, if I can't read the sign on the truck from the road, then it doesn't qualify. That's, it's hard for me to arrive at that same determination. But if we change the regulations, even if they are there, they are, they would become pre-existing, non-conforming. So at the very least, they would be prohibited from further expansion. So they're sort of locked in stone. They would, if they wanted to expand, they would come before the commission.
So that leads to another situation. By changing this, tightening everything up, does that put some kind of pressure on the town to provide or at least think about providing an industrial park site in the community so that those businesses, if they're in town, if they want to grow, there's an opportunity for them to go there and grow?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I mean, again, the hard part is you don't necessarily know how many of them exist. But if, after going through the process, there's a few, there are operations which the commission has identified as not being something that could be permitted under the language as adopted. I think, you know, we could let them know, hey, you know, this is where things stand. And, and yeah, I mean, certainly a lot of rationale behind that.
I mean, if we change things though, like you said, what kind of enforcement is there? I mean, you're chasing down the 25% right now that if you get them, you get them. If you don't, you don't. I mean, you said the courts are the only ones that can really take something away. So we could set these in, but what kind of teeth would it actually have to enforce it?
Right.
I think home office is the least of.
No, yeah, I'm saying if this goes up and you take it bigger.
Well, once people start, you know, I don't want to pick on you, but when you get your second and third truck because everything's going so well.
Oh, I.
You know?
I fully agree.
And, and then it's a situation where the neighbors start saying, yeah, we really like you as a neighbor. But, you know?
No, I.
So, but it'd be nice if you wanted to keep your business in town that as an option, there was a place, commercial piece of property that you could go to.
Certainly.
And remain a business in Willington.
And those places like that have popped up. There's one in Talon over by Ever Source, you know, I knew a couple of businesses that were in there and, you know.
Somebody went to build the industrial park, the buildings and everything and then.
Well, you put the road in or if it's just something where it's, it's a piece along the road, you know, you can subdivide that as long as it's zoned commercial or industrial. I mean, I'm, I'm just thinking, you know, when you go, when you move a couple pieces, something else needs to adjust to compensate, if you want to be fair to the business community.
So this, then the special permits right now don't have to renew, like, or which ones have to renew yearly?
Well, this is, this is the other sort of funkiness because even the sandy gravel stuff, like before me, they would just come in and do a review and staff would look at it and then issue a permit. And the regulations are very clear that it comes to you. So I don't even know, I couldn't even tell you the people who are renewing and how they were approved because all the renewals have been done through staff. So, yeah, I think another thing that we could think about is something similar to what we did for Sandy Gravel, what the town did, with basically sort of a, a section about voluntary compliance and acknowledging in the regulation that, you know, home occupations that, that come before the commission and have an existing operation will be treated in a manner that's considered to be permitted. And, you know, if they wanted to do anything further from an expansion standpoint, they would, they would need to come back or, and we could build something in there so that people that have been doing this for years and years and years don't get caught in that, that weird situation where they hadn't had standards or they've been getting renewals for 10 years and now they're feeling like this is changing things. Because to your point, what we don't want to do, I don't think, is encourage portions of these businesses to go elsewhere.
Right, yeah.
We just want to, at least in my mind, prevent the rub that could come with residential properties and neighbors. So we could build something in so that existing businesses that are operating and in compliance now don't, don't get discouraged by.
Insofar as the size they are now, but they want to take a step bigger. I think you, we should have some opportunity to, you know, have some conversations with them and maybe have, you know, if they're up for renewal, have the neighbors come in so we can get some feedback from the adjoining property owners.
Like a kind of a public hearing, determine.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's how Talon treats the major, the major home occupation goes, goes to.
I can see where that really starts, it could get to be a real rub.
Or they're going to expand a business now, they have to come before you anyway. Like it's going to be outside of what the.
It should, yeah.
It should come in anyway for review.
Should.
That's like, anything should, you know, we have a process, you got to abide by it.
Can you change the number of years? So like the simple stuff is like three, two, three years, like three to five, some bigger number. And then as you get more intense in the occupation, that renewal process is shorter.
Yeah.
It just seems wrong, somebody doing taxes, like there's something coming in here every year at a, 90 bucks.
Yeah.
I don't know.
We, we could do that. In my town, we issue them, we're set up so the ZBA has to issue special exceptions for home occupations, but you get it for a year or for, first you get it for two years and then three years and then five years. So, you know, if you come in and you demonstrate compliance, there hasn't been any issues, then basically gets issued. Then after five years, it's every five. Do something like that or you could just expand for the lesser, the lesser types, they get more time. And, and basically it would be like a compliance review. So it's not, the permit shall expire, but it's, yeah, it's, it's.
Reapplying per compliance review or something.
Right.
From an enforcement standpoint, sometimes it's useful to offer an amnesty for people who have, you know, fallen by the wayside so that they don't feel concerned about, you know, bringing up the.
Without the owe me five years and 90 bucks.
Yeah. Give them a chance to kind of, you know, come up to date and not be penalized.
Yeah, but, yeah, there, there's just some somewhat odd. There's, there's some businesses that, that are not at all tied to what I would consider to be a home occupation that we get, you know, renewals for. So we, I think, straighten some of that stuff out.
But for instance.
What I was just looking at. Ken Upling, Oil and Heating Company.
That's a home occupation.
Seventeen River Road. That's the, that's the, that's right.
Well, he sold it. He sold it now.
Right, that's one that we did, we've done previously, but that was a home occupation.
That was heritage, right?
That was considered a home occupation.
Actually, that's, you know, that's a little bit.
I mean, we do, we do, obviously, Litwin, we do Sado. The, I don't know. Village Springs, I think, was originally a home occupation.
That's obviously not.
The, the zoning changed on the parcel, I think. So those are a little bit.
Sure, Hibskies.
Yeah, Hibskies would be, it should.
Another element of confusion is if a person comes before the town and already has a business, like I did when I had my landscape business, and then I wanted to open a tax office, they said, oh, well, it's okay. One, one home office permit is enough. That was back around 2014.
David Medial and Susan.
I don't know, I didn't know.
Yeah, I didn't know people. But I don't know if that's something to be concerned about. I mean, one was a business where I had a trailer, you know, some mowers, no signage. So it just kind of blended in, but, but I paid, you know, personal property tax on all the equipment and so forth every year.
What are we actually trying to prevent here? Just a business being too large to be considered a home occupation and basically annoying the neighbors?
Yeah.
Sound the major.
I, I, I think so. It's a situation that I'll talk about. The historical society has a piece of property that they're paying property taxes on because it's a building block, improved building on it. And we're trying to sell it. Well, the guy in the corner, Rudy Roden, 74, has a quote unquote home occupation that has about four or five vehicles. He got into demolishing, strumbling foundations, clear cut the back half of his lot where his secondary field, part of his secondary field was supposed to go, dug a huge pit there and buried cement, a commercial waste.
And this is a, this is a two acre?
Right, so, well, 1.8. So he covered over the center of it and it's still gnarly on the edge. Well, we've been trying for two years to sell the lot. People look at it and it's like, we don't think so. So who's, so what's happening?
I guess all these things got blew out of hand.
Well, yeah, and, you know, I'm not pointing the finger at Mike or the land use, but that's what can happen. So, I mean, when we get beyond the home office.
So what, what would that?
We need to keep an eye on how big these things are getting.
So what would that business be classified as presently? What is it?
It's an electrician.
An electrician that's bearing.
Yeah, he's a plumber.
Plumber.
Plumber that's bearing.
Right.
Probably.
Well, he's got a couple digs going, you know, foundation replacement. You know, it's when, when something's hot, people jump into it, expertise or not. You know, shouldn't probably say that, but, you know, the opportunity arises. Well, I don't want to pay to get rid of the waste, so I'll bury it on my own property. So, I mean, that gets to a point where it's a major home occupation. So, I mean, that gets to a point where it's a major home occupation.
So it sounds like we like the home office, minor and major home occupation, dividing it into those three categories. Am I hearing that right, or is that? We're just using their terminology.
That that's Talon's, who do you like better, Talon's or Clinton's here?
I like the simplicity of Talon's.
Yeah.
But I like the layout of Clinton because it's all in one place and it's very easy to see. How you go from one.
Dayable, I like.
Right. So and and as far as terminology goes, something, there are. There are some standards which are a little bit different and it's by nature of the way that Ashford is is laid out and. Developed, I guess you will, but what Ashford has, what they call home occupations and rural businesses. So the major home occupation that we refer to in Talon would would sort of equate to what Ashford would consider a rural business. And it's just the nature of you have. Properties that can really accommodate that or buildings that are here, there and everywhere. And so they call it that, and there's some limitations on square footage and other things, but. You know, it it sort of describes what we're talking about, so we could call it something else if we don't wanna call it major home occupation. We could call it a rural business or something like that. I keep reading through and 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 it's possible that it's in another section of the regs, I just don't have it in front of me, but. The one thing that again is really silent in ours is is for things like vehicles. I know we've got some other stuff in the regulations that speaks to it, but.
We really don't. To have a garage as a home occupation, that's supposed to work on vehicles and a home occupation.
We have something that talks about residential garages, but there's nothing that says. A a home occupation, if if a guy is is a plumber, well. You know, I think, do we, do we get into employees?
Tradesmen are in it.
In addition to the two resident parking spaces. So they they limit, we limit the total number of parking spaces to five, okay? So.
Well, we have two non-resident persons engaged in the business.
But when you're talking about vehicles and equipment, you could have a lot more. Pieces of equipment than employees because you use different ones on different days.
Sure.
We've got.
If you're an excavation contractor, you're gonna.
Right. We have um an i- an issue with one in Talon where the guy is is, I guess, a landscaper. And in the winter time.
Flows probably, so he's got.
So he gets.
Flows and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the.
Salt stand.
So he has a, he has several vehicles and they're all um. None of them have signs or anything like that, he owns them all. But he, you know, us, when there's any type of weather, these trucks are coming and going all day, all night, and the neighbors are really upset about that. Other than that, we haven't really had um any any issues with uh the regulations not working or. We've got people that just can't do it as a home occupation, but. It all seems to be around. Either they start too early, they make too many trips throughout the day, they have too many vehicles, or. We don't like looking at whatever is associated with it, those seem to be the biggest potential issues.
I don't know, I I I'd like to stay away from the idea of having quote unquote a rural business, I mean. Define rural. Insofar as what what the setting is.
Shaking butter.
You know, for the most part, I like to think of willing to as rural, but. Not. All these home businesses are, if it's in um. You know, something that's been sub divided and built up. Qualify as really a quote unquote rural setting.
Something that I I can do if if you want and we don't, we can wait, um is I can take the format. That you kind of see with table and I can use the language that's currently in the regulations. To try and essentially feed our current criteria into a table format and then. We can look at what that is and we can kind of see where the blanks are. And you can figure out from there how you wanna slot stuff in and we can also talk about making amendments.
That might be an interesting way to look at it.
Just to kind of see how our regs lay out in a Clinton style.
I like, I like the way they did it.
Yeah.
It's easier to follow.
Yeah.
That that might be interesting to see that and then start working that.
Yeah.
But yeah, I I don't think any of us wanna like. You know, be an impediment to people's occupations and everything and. Create more layers of bureaucracy on them, I think, you know, we just don't want things to get out of hand and cause it bother neighbors and.
Well, we don't wanna have to sit through another Alice's restaurant with eight by ten glossy photos.
That was awesome.
It was.
That was the best. That was the best.
What about the disposal of products on?
Well, I don't think there should be any disposal.
That only that somewhere you can't like dump fill in a year and a. Yes, it is, yeah.
Yeah, there's a, there's a a threshold.
Yeah.
We've talked with the state about, I mean, crumbling concrete and their perception at the time was if it's being disposed of on the property, then it's. Then the disposal is happening by the generator and they didn't care. But through that discussion, because the health department had concerns about burying concrete that could create voids that would later sink. Or septic reserves. If you apply for a new house now, it will ask you questions about, or foundation or plating rather, it'll ask you specific questions. And we flag any property if they say that the disposal is happening on the site. So that we know. Because you don't wanna say, oh, I can put my detached garage over here and you go to dig it out and boom, there's concrete.
Pool in it next day.
Or it starts, it as it breaks down, it starts to collapse and you have these, cuz they're big sections and so if they just throw them in.
They'll get it kind of be smashed, you know, if you're gonna put them in.
Right.
Doesn't it make sense to ask them what their, what their plan is for debris? When when they're entering into a, you know, replacement foundation?
Yeah, we ask them if they're gonna be disposing of the material on site and if they check yes, then it puts them through a whole bunch of other things and it notifies us. And then we flag the the address and notify help.
I mean, like on their own site?
Yes, yep.
No, on some, on the contractor's site. Opposed to the work site.
If it's being disposed of offsite?
Yeah.
Like what Bob was.
That's what Bob was talking about.
Yeah, I mean.
Got that in from a job, he was doing, or a couple of jobs, he was doing who knows where.
Yeah.
I mean, you're not gonna bury too many jobs on a two, on a one point eight acre lot.
He's got a, he's got a pretty good mound there.
Yeah, I mean, the the la- the hard part was the last time we talked about it, the state was, didn't regulate it, it wasn't considered to be hazardous or any, there were no. It's not good, they wouldn't use it for road beds and other things, but they didn't. They didn't wanna know, the health department wanted to know just because of the reserve and and some of the other stuff. It's good information to have, but they weren't, they weren't really concerned about it, which sounds kind of surprised, but. You know, you you port- a portion of the payout, my understanding, is related to moving that offsite. And so if the payout is happening based upon all of that work, but the part where it gets hauled offsite doesn't occur. I don't think anybody's giving that money back to the state. Are they giving?
There's lots of disposal companies that are taking it because they're repurposing it as processed uh processed base for different applications. Because it's so jagged, when it crushes up, it's incredible locking material to stabilize different uh. Different soil conditions, so we, they pay, they, we pay pennies to get rid of it.
Yeah.
To crushing places.
Like driveways or?
Uh any type of like real material base. Soil condition that you need to try to stabilize with cheap material, I mean, the crushed of concrete is like, I'm almost the best you can get it cuz it's jagged. It's jagged, it's firm, it's. But it's all, but like an everything takes it and, I mean, what, they'll take it for eight dollars a ton? I think so.
Process material.
Yeah, they get the all the rebar out, any metal, they throw it through their screeners and their magnets and then they process it up.
That's cool, it's, it's good, they can do something with it.
So that's like they.
Better just bury it. Good purpose. It's great. All right, so that's the takeaway, Mike, trying to put that and then we, maybe we can put this on an upcoming agenda and just keep going until we get it done. I think this is important one.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, and it took a while to get back, but you know, I think we all kind of remember the whole. Scene. And I guess we could talk about the permit duration and everything to it. Most definitely, you know, if we wanna do anything or not. I don't think we wanna take away too much revenue out of the town, but here again, we don't wanna burden the, unnecessarily either.
There's a background.
Yeah, I hear you.
Does the price change if the length of the permit is different, or it's just a flat fee, just?
Every, every land use application that the town accepts, we have to send sixty dollars to the state.
I think like a minor home occupation, it doesn't make a lot of sense like to come in here every year, you know, if you're not taxes or you're. You know. You're you're a.
Might have.
Psycho therapist or something.
Might have to check in every three or five years, but.
Yeah, sure, yeah, just to make sure things are.
Kind of keep tabs, you know, economic development, commission wants to know who's doing business in town.
All right, well, good discussion, I, I think we. Hey, a little headway. Which brings us to uh our finish business of which there's not, and I approve of minutes from February sixth. Twenty twenty four. I want to say, did on my birthday, taxes.
Would you like to make the motion then?
Sure.
Capital.
Yeah, that's sure off, and and I'll even, you know, last time I went, you know, those meetings at the wrong time, those are an essential time. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of uh February sixth, twenty twenty four.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, which brings us to the meetings of uh minutes of February twentieth.
I know they approved the minutes of February twenty 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 four.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so minutes are approved from the sixth, then we get twentieth. Any correspondence, Mike?
Um, we just got something in today from the Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning Agencies, it's a. It's an annual membership that uh commission, I guess, can submit of the town. They they have like a usually an annual meeting of aqua turf, I think you have gone in years past or. So I don't know if that's a something that, an organization the commission wants to to join again. It's a hundred and thirty dollars for the year, they send little legal updates, I think, on a quarterly basis of of any case law that's happening. And they have that annual meeting. We have it in the budget, I think it's something the town has been doing for. Probably quite a while, so we can continue with the membership unless we don't want to, it's up to you.
I think it's that I need to stay in touch with the.
Yeah.
Organization, yeah.
Okay. If if we're like a thousand dollars, maybe we can have more of a discussion, but. Very good idea to stay connected. All right, so brings us to item I, public participation for items not listed on the agenda, so we have no one in the audience here, and I have a online. Item J, staff report discussion. One, three twenty seven Ruby Road, TA Travel Center Water Improvement Plans.
I'm gonna, I just wanna. Kind of figure out how to. Come this off if I can, I wanna be able to show what this is and I. I don't know why. I don't remember how we did this last time, or why it didn't show.
They're actually building a drinking water treatment plant.
Yeah, so I I'll uh, I can give you just a quick background, um while I kind of fill in with this, um. So you can see in red, I kind of have called it out, um they need to put in a very small. I think there's a. Detail for it, twenty, basically twenty eight by twenty eight building.
By the filtration and so forth.
So I, I asked them, can you give me a little bit of uh background as to what has caused this and he since. Who mailed me over today, actually, just got back to me, uh he said that the. The Haley Ward, who is the the engineer that was brought on by TA. Um have, that that the TA has been battling an ongoing issue with the drinking water system and that the existing um drinking water wells on the property. Do not, are not able to sufficiently keep up with demand, so they're going to be redesigning. Um the system and adding an additional well. To basically treat and provide the water that's needed for the property. Those wells along with the existing ones will lead into the proposed water treatment building. Where higher levels of naturally occurring iron and manganese will be mitigated before heading into the existing underground storage tank. So. They don't really have an opportunity to put it anywhere else, um and I don't personally think this is something that rises to the level of needing. A full blown review by the commission, we have a a survey and a site plan, it meets the criteria as far as it's not creating. Any. Non-conformities. That are. I think gonna create. Some type of of problem, um but I wanted to at least bring it to you to see how you wanted to handle it, you wanted us to do this as a staff approval. We'd obviously do a a review. But I, I mean, it seemed to be similar to a. An accessory structure.
Yeah, I'm good with staff approval. Unless they're grabbing one more well.
And two, proposed well seven and eight.
Okay, maybe two, um this.
How many existing wells are there?
That, I am not sure.
Have anything to do with roadway in, are they? Wells interfering with each other?
Um, he didn't say. He ju- he said TA. Um but I assume it's all.
Cuz it's closer to, closer to roadway in is where that.
Yeah.
Marked for. This looks like a system that they have of the loves. Looks very similar to a system that loves.
And um. I think we're going to be seeing something similar for FedEx. I think the state, I think, we may have talked about this, the state changed their. Some of the requirements related to water treatment and how, what they have to do and what standards they need to renovate water to. And I think that has created a significant um need for improvements and upgrades to a lot of the facilities. And I know that FedEx is one of them. If I'm repeating myself, stop me, but I believe that the folks that did the design and and implementation of the love system. Basically finished with loves and and have immediately jumped into trying to figure out how to deal with the FedEx site, which is challenging because. The areas that are developed are pretty much. Parking lot.
Is that plus on the mail?
Yeah. Yeah, Jason Hoffman is the, the guy who did it.
They mentioned how deep the well's gonna be?
They did not, I don't think that's on here, I may make sure. So I don't know if they are, I would imagine they qualify as a. Public water system on the state's guidelines, I don't know if that's what's necessitating this. I don't see anyone that talks about the depth. But I, I mean, either way, I I didn't really see this as a site plan modification, it's providing drinking water, it's being done to. You know, standards that are developed by people beyond the town.
They they have to do this.
Yeah.
System water main relocation from.
Yeah, so there is. There is an existing pump station which is further down uh to the right. There is an existing pump station which is further down uh to the right uh that is. A little bit hard to see, but where you see it says Route three twenty, then to the right of that you'll see existing pump station.
Yeah, you see it when you drive by, but it's very small. I think most of it's in the ground.
Yeah, so this, the the new one is going to be a little bit larger. But not approximately the same size. It'll be further back from the road, probably. Because the the current one is in the setback. It's very close to the road. This one will be. This will be probably seventy five feet back. And so they're saying that that one's going, that one is to be remodeled. But I had, I figured we would ask them, you know, depending, they've got some stuff here. I don't know exactly where it falls, but. You know, if there's, if the building's just going to sit there, we could ask them to do some landscaping on the front of it so it's not. Obtrusive from the road.
Is it far enough away from those parking spaces?
It should be.
It looks off the globe.
It is. I don't have the, I don't, we don't have anything that says it has to be a certain distance as long as it's. Not going to interfere with any accessibility issues. My guess is if they were plowing that, they would push it towards the road.
Um, you wouldn't think they'd want to like compromise their own parking spaces.
Yeah.
Sounds, it kind of looks like it's south.
Yeah, it's kind of a little sketchy. Why don't they just put it in the pool that doesn't need to sell out? Sorry, did I forget that?
I was told that at one point in time there was an alligator that lived.
It might have been someone who grabbed.
But that is everybody that possibly brought it up, really, an emotional support alligator.
Be like the peacock someone told tried to get on the airplane that was their emotional support animal? They had a peathead in the morning. They're annoying.
I can't imagine. So obviously this will still get reviewed by Eastern Highlands. And we'll do a review to make sure it meets all the criteria and um.
I don't see any reason why staff can't handle this. Somebody else feel there, totally here.
No. Well. They will anyway, what can we set that?
My film. It's that tall. I've got the senses, you know.
Although I just bring your attention to this, Mike, on the on the covered one. Where it says the the proposed well that's to the extreme left. If you follow their proposed pipeline, it does go into the setback area for that one wetland.
Yeah, I. I did see that. One of the things that I I don't think they have here and I needed to wanted to compare to was. If all of this. Is. I guess it would, yeah, it would have to be proposed. Trying to figure out how much of that was new. Because there's a couple of other W's that.
Yeah, there's no other.
Because if you see, if you see in the middle of that, it says tractor trailer parking. So it shows it's in the upland review, but I think that's the parking area. You see how it shows that in a couple of places, tractor trailer parking?
Yeah, right here.
There's three.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So well, it's kind of shows it all over the place.
Yeah.
Which. So I.
That's against the chain link fence that said the chain link fence runs right down one side of where that well's going.
Yeah, so if you see there, that line that runs around is the gate. So they're showing the wetland in the upland, but that. Overlaps the, I think, existing parking area.
Okay.
That's my guess. I don't know how well it lines up, but.
Yeah, so so tiny. I haven't got my good regular glasses on, so it's like I see.
Tractor trailer parking, tractor trailer parking through here.
Yeah.
There's the fence right here, chain link fence runs right, right there.
So all of this is underneath there. Most of part of this underneath there.
Yeah, it's just their hundred foot wetlands spot for over here.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
That could blow themselves for a solid. That's that's go ahead, zoom in, zoom in. It's like, that's trailer, tractor, trailer parking. And you can see the link fence over in the.
The line to your right, kind of next to proposed well eight on the left, it says edge of pavement running top to bottom.
There you go. So here's most, you can see very faintly the striping. Tractor trailer striping.
Yeah, yeah.
And it says tractor trailer, tractor pulls well. It pavement.
That's right up, right up outside of where the striping is for the parking.
Yeah, and so this is the gate.
There's the fence. You can see it much better in this. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So then it's taking a well and a wetland.
Yeah, I guess so. And I don't know how that would work because I imagine it would be under the. The state, but I don't know that they would get state permit there. So we'll have to figure out and work with them, obviously, if they need a weapon permit, but. Yeah, that's the building proposed and this is the existing building.
Yeah, we've got some bushes planted around that one that's existing now.
Yeah.
Can I ask them to put some around this one if it's going to be visible?
Yeah, yeah, well.
It's going to be somewhat.
Yeah, it. Yeah, it'll be, looks like the road is about six twenty one and this is about six thirteen, so it'll be about eight feet lower than the road. I don't know if it said how tall the building is.
About like sixteen, six, seventeen feet total. Wall height is like nine four and then add another six and a half feet on top for the peak.
I am not off the top of my head able to picture this, but it's not really, is it a full blown building or is it in the concrete?
It's a, I mean.
It takes this long.
Oh, it's this long.
It's that concrete. I don't even think it's more than four or four feet up.
Yeah.
It's got the flat roof on it.
Yeah, if you're in there for too long, it's a big space. That is scary as one of the classics.
Because I know that they had asked about some other work they were trying to do, you know, a couple of years back.
Well, yes. Yeah, yeah, so the walls are eight foot, like.
Okay.
CMU, CMU walls.
Yeah, go down right about where that truck was.
Yeah, so right here.
So it's behind that.
This uh whatever that is. Yeah.
Yeah, to the right of that generator.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's in that.
So that's got to be the other, that's another generator, so it's got to be in there.
So where's the new one going in relation to that?
Um. Okay. So it should be. Right down here.
Two thousand and eight, if you can see the little bunker before that thing. Back to the tree.
Right about where that red tree was, I think.
This is two thousand and eight here.
Further down?
No, still a nut pile of trees.
Oh.
Right there. You just had your mouse on it.
It looked better then. Looked a little bit more. Now it's alive. Now it's all these vines.
Yeah, the vines got up in the trees, yeah.
So yeah, this.
That's winter too, but.
It's gonna, I I think it'll be right in here.
Somewhere, yeah. Looks like it was right next, right where those, whatever they are, because there's that little cutout.
Yeah, that's gotta be the dumpster.
You know, right in front of those dumpsters or wherever there is. Looks like this is the. Area right here, the dumpsters are here and then this cutout is here.
Yeah. Thanks.
Over wraps it up, so it brings us to uh here on this, so it's eight thirty PM meeting, Barry. Thanks, everyone.